You called the committee board. The innovation made to be done by Pastor.
Sir, a faith formation, Rick Schaefer from Port City Community Church.
Our God, our Father, thank you for a beautiful afternoon. As we orient ourselves to the business before us, let us first orient ourselves to you. Every time this body convenes, there's the possibility that what is holy might shape what is common, that influential women and men will guide our county's direction for everyone's flourishing. This, of course, is complicated work that requires prudence. We're grateful that you make your inexhaustible wisdom available to anyone who asks for it. Some in this room may seek your wisdom because they know of your greatness and power, and your relentless advocacy for those who have very little power. Others here will seek your wisdom because they know you as the God of love, whose commands will benefit every one of us in ways we can hardly imagine. While some seek you, we know others do not. We thank you for the men and women here who give themselves to the complex task of governing such a diverse and sometimes discordant people. These leaders live among us. They share our streets, our shops, our churches, and our subdivisions. We are neighbors. Today, we trust you to guide the presentations, decisions, and proclamations. Please bless our commissioners and their families, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is the regular agenda, and we have the pleasure of having Mr. William R. Turner, consideration of our resolution, recognizing him, and Mr. Councilman Scalise is going to read it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You are correct that this is a very happy occasion today. We have the opportunity to recognize a member of our community who has done quite a lot over quite a long period to not only elevate himself within the Scouts, but also to help a couple of hundred other people over the course of a very long career. And we've got some of his friends and family here with him today, as well as the mayor pro tem of the Rachel Beach Board of Aldermen, Hank Miller, who helped bring this matter to my attention. I understand that Alderman Miller and Mr. Turner are in the Scouts together. So please allow me to read this resolution, and then I believe that Mr. Miller is going to introduce Mr. Turner, and we're going to hear from both of them here shortly. The new Hannover County Board of Commissioners, resolution recognizing William R. Turner, Jr. for 75 consecutive years dedicated to scouting America. Whereas William R. Turner, Jr. has devoted 75 consecutive years of service to the Boy Scouts of America, now scouting America, beginning as a young scout in the first grade and rising through the ranks to earn the distinguished Eagle Scout Award. And whereas, and as an adult, Mr. Turner remained an active and registered member of scouting America even while serving his country in the United States Army, and being stationed in Asia, notably working with South Korean scouts for a number of years. And whereas, Mr. Turner has been an active member and leader of Troop 26 for 60 years, which is sponsored by Wesley Memorial United Methodist Church in Wilmington. And Troop 26 is the largest troop in the Scouting Americas Council eight county service area. Mr. Turner has previously served as the group scout master on multiple occasions and currently serves as committee chair, in addition to holding various scouting America leadership positions locally, statewide, and nationally. And whereas, notably, Mr. Turner has been actively involved in helping more than 250 scouts achieve their Eagle Scout Award, an honor earned by less than 2% of all program participants, and Eagle Scout recipients, both historically and today, represent some of the most respected, respected and esteemed leaders in our country. And whereas, Mr. Turner's personal values closely align with scouting America's core principles, emphasizing duty to God and country, helping others at all times, and offering a lending hand to those in need. And whereas, this 75th anniversary milestone is a remarkable accomplishment achieved by very few members of scouting America or any other organization, Mr. Turner's commitment, dedication, and passion have touched countless lives, shaping generations of young people and strengthening the fabric of our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, be it resolved, rather, that the new Hannover County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes William R. Turner, Jr. for 75 consecutive years dedicated to scouting America, and extends sincere appreciation for his unwavering service, exemplary leadership, and lasting contributions to New Hannover County and the greater Cape Fear region adopted this third day of November 2025 by our esteemed Chair, New Hannover County's William E. Rivenmark. Thank you very much. Mr. Miller, please let us know a little bit more about this fine gentleman that we're recognizing today.
Thank you, Commissioners Scalise, and I guess it's good afternoon, not good evening, Commissioners, Chair Rivenmark, Vice Chair Pierce, and Commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen. It is a real privilege to be here this afternoon to introduce someone whose life and body, service, and leadership, and that's Mr. William Bill Turner, Jr. Bill has distinguished himself as an educator, a community leader, and a volunteer who's given his time to countless boards and committees. But perhaps his greatest legacy is his incredible 75 years of active involvement in scouting America. That's not just longevity, it's a lifetime of shaping young people through honor, service, and preparedness. From his start as a young scout to decades of mentoring others, Bill has truly lived the scout oath and law. Here in Wilmington, he spent 60 years leading Troop 26 at Wesley Memorial United Methodist Church, the largest troop in our eight county area. He served as scout master many times and continues as committee chair today. I'm proud to say both of my sons, Henry and Mac, are scouts in that very troop. Henry's on his way to Life Scout, or, excuse me, on his way to Eagle Scout, proof of the strong legacy Bill continues to build. Over the years, he's helped more than, as you said, 250, I think it's 267 scouts, including his own son who's here tonight, and to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, an honor achieved by fewer than 2% of all participants. That has an extraordinary impact on our community and our youth. Bill, your devotion reminds us all of what it means to be a leader in the world and leave the world better than we found it. If I may, on behalf of the community, the county commissioners, and the many people you've inspired, congratulations on 75 years of remarkable years of scouting and service. We're grateful for you and everything you've done. Thank you, my friend.
Mr. Turner, would you like to make some brief remarks? You don't have to, but if you'd like to, the floor is yours for a few moments.
Excuse me. It's an honor to be able to be recognized by the county commissioners. One thing about it, we learn, the adult learns from the scouts, because they are our future leaders, and that's what I want us to continue to do, is to teach the young boys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to bring this resolution to the board and for my fellow commissioners agreeing that it was appropriate. I do make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's come up and take a photo. Please, everybody who came with Mr. Turner, we'd like you to be in the photo.
Next is consideration of pre-maturity awareness month proclamation. Board member.
Hannover County Board of Commissioners Prematurity Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas premature birth, defined as birth before 37 weeks of pregnancy, remains a leading cause of infant illness and death across North Carolina and the nation. And whereas, local data shows that in New Hannover County, the percentage of babies born preterm has ranged from 9.9% to 11.8% between 2019 and 2023, indicating that roughly one in 10 local births occurs too early. And whereas, preterm birth can lead to long-term health and developmental challenges for children, and emotional and financial strain for families. And whereas, New Hannover County partners with healthcare systems, including Novant Health, along with community organizations to advance education, access to prenatal care, and programs that address social determinants of health, such as housing, transportation, and nutrition. And whereas, public awareness efforts in November promote early action, education, and community support to prevent preterm births and give every baby the best possible start in life. And now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Hannover County Board of Commissioners, that the month of November is recognized as Prematurity Awareness Month, and November 17th is World Prematurity Day in New Hannover County. The board encourages residents, healthcare providers, and community partners to join in raising awareness and promoting healthy beginnings for every child, adopted this third day of November 2025 by William E. Rivenmark, Chair. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Brandy Garris. I'm the nurse manager at the NICU in New Hannover Regional Medical Center. Thank you for recognizing this day today. As the manager there, I see every day the impact of premature, premature births on our patients and families, and having a baby in the NICU can take an enormous toll on the families. I'm not going to go over the statistics because you already shared those, but our NICU, for those of you who don't know, is, has 45 private rooms, and we range from about 700 admissions per year, so anywhere from 22 weeks to full-term patients. And so, we deliver remarkable specialized care to help those infants. So thank you for the proclamation, and by working together, we can advance awareness, strengthen family support, and invest in initiatives to ensure every baby receives the healthiest start. Thank you.
Hold on, is there a motion to adopt?
Yes, there is. And a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is a hearing on a revocation of a solid waste collection franchise. This is a hearing to consider revocation of the franchise for Seahawk Sanitation to haul solid waste in Hannover County. We will hear a brief overview from our deputy county attorney, Kim Burpo, followed by statements from recycling and solid waste director, Joe Sullivan, and deputy sheriff, Sergeant Sean Moore. Then the owner of Seahawk Sanitation and any other persons they designate will have up to 15 minutes to present evidence to be considered by this board. So first would be Steph Overeem.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Seahawk Sanitation, Inc. franchise was executed October 12th, 2023. The agreement requires compliance with County Code, Chapter 44, and applicable laws to include the County Noise Ordinance, which prohibits excessive noise between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM in residential areas, and the nuisance ordinance addressing annoyances and discomfort. In March, May, and June 2025, county management received five complaints from residents that Seahawk was collecting trash with large compactor trucks around 4:00 and 5:00 AM in the Ogden Middle Zone Treasure Cove and North Hill subdivisions, disturbing their peace. The county recycling and solid waste director and a sergeant with the sheriff's office followed up with the owner of Seahawk Sanitation on several different occasions notifying him of these nuisances, but the complaints continued. After the fifth complaint was made, the county manager determined that the franchise should be revoked, and directed the county attorney's office to inform the corporate owner-manager, Anthony Jordan Cordero. Mr. Cordero timely appealed the manager's determination to the Board of Commissioners, which is the reason for the hearing today. The following documents are introduced into record without objection. One, award of franchise agreement. Two, County Code, Chapter 44, 55. Three, County Code Noise Ordinance, Chapter 23, Environment, Article 11, Noise, and Article 3, Nuisance. Four, revocation notice letter dating July 30th, 2025, and the hearing continuation letter dated October 3rd, 2025. Will be available to answer any legal questions that might come up. Joe Suleman will now present. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I initially received a forwarded complaint from a resident on March 24th, 2025 regarding Seahawk Sanitation operating in the early hours of the morning and causing a disruption in and around their neighborhood. The resident stated they had submitted a complaint directly with the company, and, according to the resident, the company replied that they could not change their schedule due to traffic and employee safety. I subsequently emailed Mr. Cordero, noting the noise complaint and outlining Chapter 23 of the New Hannover County Code of Ordinances that prohibits certain levels of noise in residential zones, specifically in the early morning hours, and that franchisees must abide by all local ordinances and laws. I asked that he refrain from violating the ordinance and let him know that if additional violations occur, Seahawk Sanitation may be subject to enforcement penalties, including ultimate revocation of the franchise agreement with New Hannover County. Mr. Cordero responded, sharing information about their operations and the steps they attempt to avoid noise disruption. He noted that they are committed to being respectful to neighbors while ensuring their team can complete their work safely and efficiently. After this correspondence, we did not receive another complaint until May 14th. At that time, the sheriff's office was engaged to help address the noise complaint, as that falls within their realm to enforce. I also called the company to discuss the additional complaint and reminded Mr. Cordero of the noise ordinance. He was agreeable and noted that they ran early to beat the heavy traffic and the heat. The county then received another complaint on June 4th, that the company was continuing to operate in the neighborhoods around 5:40 AM, and it is my understanding that the sheriff's office again spoke with Mr. Cordero, who said he would address this with his crew and driver, and was apologetic. It is my understanding, based on correspondence with the sheriff's office in early June, that the company was going to cancel the accounts in this area to avoid further issues. However, the county received two additional complaints on June 18th and June 25th, that the company was in the neighborhood at 4:40 AM and 5:30 AM respectively, picking up trash. Following these five complaints spanning from March through June, and given that the franchise owner had not completed, complied with written warnings and verbal communications by both me and the sheriff's office, the county manager determined the franchise should be revoked. Since then, legal has coordinated the revocation letter and communicated with Mr. Cordero. I'm available for any questions from the board.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one. What is the timeframe that they're allowed to do the service?
Anytime after 7:00 AM in residential zoned areas.
What, what kind of, is this the kind where you lift it up and bang it, getting all the trash out of it?
So in this particular case, it's loaded from the rear of the truck with what we call cart tippers. So they're hydraulically operated assist devices to lift the cart into the back, and then that triggers a compaction cycle, which the operator can run multiple times if needed to clear that hopper area of the waste.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chair. Joe, so there was recognition by the franchisee that they had violated the county ordinance as regards sound, correct?
They admitted that they were in those neighborhoods at those times, yes, sir.
And at least from what I understand, and reading some of the record, and I looked through this, they told us that they weren't going to do it anymore, they were going to tell the driver that they were going to have to stop doing it, but then further complaints transpired after that, isn't that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
All right. I do want to obviously hear the rest of this, but I find it very problematic. We have a society that is built on the rule of law. We set rules and laws in place, and we expect people to abide by them because even whenever it's the little things, whenever you start saying that we're just going to let things slide because of whatever inconvenience to somebody, all of what makes a civilization work goes away. So I have to tell you, I'm very bothered by this situation. I don't think that it's appropriate that this company knew about what was required of them and then elected repeatedly not to follow the rules and regulations that are clearly set forth here in New Hannover County. Again, I'm keeping an open mind as we proceed in this hearing, but this is not acceptable. And I think it was appropriate, based on the evidence that I have been seen and presented to us today, that this franchise was revoked, but of course, there are appeal rights, and we'll see what happens as it proceeds.
Yeah, thank you. Joe, when did Seahawk Sanitation receive their franchise agreement? Do we know?
I think that you said it was October 12th of 2023.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so relatively new.
Yes, sir.
In the last two years. I see. And how large of a business is it?
It's not very large at all. It's one of our smaller franchisees.
I see.
Just a few trucks.
If this franchise is revoked, it would not have a major impact on the customers or citizens who are serviced by them. Is that fair to say?
I don't know what kind of impact it may have on his customers, but there are alternatives out there.
Ah, that was my next question. So we have plenty of other franchisees, right?
Yes, sir. I believe the number is in the very high teens at this point.
Who do follow the laws?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any complaints from any of the others, and somebody, including anecdotally, about early morning pickup?
The only complaints I've received regarding our franchisees are not related to noise complaints.
I see. In our agreement with the franchisees, do we have a clause that directly relates to hours of operation or not going to residential's before 7:00 AM?
It doesn't specifically call out times, however, it does require them to comply with New Hannover County Code of Ordinances, which would include those prohibitions.
And then you did have a direct conversation with them after the first complaint, reminding them of that 7:00 AM start time.
That is correct.
Followed up by another one again in June, excuse me, May, and then three in June.
The follow-on communications were with the sheriff's department.
I see. And did the sheriff's departments talk specifically to them, Mr. Cordero?
That I would have to defer to the responding deputy on that complaint.
I think it's safe to say that there was a lot of warning given to this franchisee. Would you agree?
I would agree that there was plenty of opportunity to correct the behavior, yes, sir.
Thanks, Joe, as always.
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Sergeant Moore here.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I apologize, I did not prepare a statement such as Mr. Burpo and Mr. Suleman, but I can confirm the information that they gave was, that was direct to my involvement is accurate. And I just came to answer any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. You keep pretty busy over at the sheriff's office?
Yes, sir, we do.
Do you have other things that you could have worked on, other than go and talk to these folks about following the rules and regulations in New Hannover County?
Absolutely.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Did you follow up with personal conversations with the owner of this after each complaint?
Yes, sir. I had, to my recollection, I had two different conversations, if not a couple others, but I remember two specifically, my initial conversation with Jordan, and then the follow-up after the additional complaint of the driver entering the neighborhood too early, and Jordan said that he was going to confront that driver and correct the issue.
Jordan being whom?
The owner of Seahawk Sanitation, Mr. Cordero.
I see, okay. And were those conversations civil and polite?
Absolutely, they were, yes. Mr. Cordero was extremely polite and seemed to be very cooperative in taking care of the issue.
Yet the problem persisted.
To my understanding, hearing further information today about the future complaints that happened after my conversation with Jordan, yes.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Like, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jordan, Jordan owner of Seahawk Sanitation. So I just wanted to get up and kind of provide my side of the story, so appreciate you guys hearing that.
You got, and you got 15 minutes.
Won't take that long.
Okay.
So, just to, just to start this off, this isn't, when this isn't, when we received these complaints, this wasn't something that we or the guys took lightly. We received our first email from Joe on three twenty-six regarding a complaint from a customer for a noise complaint. Immediately after we received that, I called Joe. Called Joe to try to get some clarification, hey, where is this noise complaint coming from? Try to make the situation right. Due to some confidentiality reasons, obviously, the resident couldn't be exposed. Um, so the next day, we ended up seeing a one-star review from a customer in the North Ogden area. So we were able to do some digging, figured out where that customer was, and turns out that this customer was in a location that was really just a one-off stop for us and not on our full route. So when I spoke to the guys, yes, we leave the yard at six. We pick up several accounts on Quarters Neck Road, Murrayville, Middle Sound Loop. And yes, admittedly, we do try to get on those roads and off those roads as quick as we can, especially during the week. So we ultimately, for that one-off customer in the North Ogden area, we spoke with that account after we was, after we saw the one-star review, and we told her like, hey, we don't want to disrupt the neighborhood, to which the customer told us that her neighbor was also harassing us, that it's probably best that we discontinue her service. So we did. So the complaint at the end of March, um, we received three on three twenty-six, followed up with Joe, sent him an email, um, and then ultimately, we ended up canceling this, discontinuing this customer's service the next week. And to my knowledge, after that, I didn't have an e- another email from Joe in regards to a complaint in that neighborhood. Fast forward to the end of May, which I also want to note, we're saying five, there's five complaints, but ultimately, to my knowledge, it was from two people. This one person and then this other person that's in the North Hill subdivision. Um, so fast forward to May, don't know the exact date in which that complaint was received. Received a call from, from Sergeant Moore. He called the office, to which I called him back immediately after, after we got the voicemail. So I say that just to show, we're not, we're not throwing this to the side. This is something that we took seriously. So we talked to, I talked to Sergeant Moore, um, tried to, again, try to get some information on where is this customer coming, or where's the complaint coming from? Could give me a general location, but was ultimately due to confidentiality reasons, couldn't get the na- the exact location that it was in. Ultimately, that person ended up sending us an email who was complaining, to which we were able to identify where that specific location was, was at. And due to some timing stuff, I was able to track where it was too. Ultimately, we identified where that person was at. We talked to Sergeant Moore. The customer's original request was that we get into the neighborhood after six. Got into the neighborhood after six, then they requested we get in after seven. This again was another one-off stop from us, for us that wasn't right on our route or in a, a large residential area that we service. Um, so we ultimately decided to speak with that customer and tell them that we had to discontinue their service too. So after, after the complaints, that was from the same person over a three-week span, um, that was end of May, June, we ultimately discontinued this customer's service at the end of their billing period, which was a quarterly cycle on six thirty. And to my knowledge, since then, we haven't had any additional complaints that I've been made aware of. So fast forward, um, fast forward now, or fast forward to after that was, that was handled, followed up with Sergeant Moore just to confirm that no, there were no additional complaints and to make sure that the situation was satisfied, and to my knowledge, there wasn't anything after that. So say all that to show that we're trying to do the right thing. We're checking in with people to make sure there's no more complaints, and that was the end. We heard of that. So after that was, after that was finished, uh, fast forward to, I think the date of the revocation letter was July thirtieth. I think I finally received that on eight thirty, or eight twenty-eight, somewhere around there, saying that, hey, we're revoking your franchise. Um, so with this conversation, I really just wanted to come up here and show that, hey, we don't, it's not something that we take lightly. Like Joe said, we're not a huge holler. We've got about three hundred customers, three hundred and fifty cans, three sixty that we pick up. A lot in the North Wilmington area. And yes, there are probably other options for them. Um, but since two thousand, since two thousand and twenty-three, we've had complaints for two customers, and we've picked up a lot of trash bins. In my opinion, I, I do agree, we shouldn't have been in the neighborhood early, um, and we've tried to make that situation right. We now start a little bit later. We used to only pick up two days a week, and we try to cram it into two days a week. Now we pick up Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and we shortened our route so that we can start later and get our route done. So with that, I can step back, open it up to any questions that you guys have.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Mr. Cordero, how many, how many trucks do you have?
So we have one Azuzu ten-yard rear loader, and I think that's a, a good question. This is a rear tipper, like Joe mentioned. It's a smaller truck. It's similar to what you guys run downtown Wilmington.
So it's two?
So we have one Azuzu rear loader that we run.
That's it?
So one truck?
Yeah.
So does your employee take the truck home at the end of the day? Or does it come to, does he come, he, she come to a central location to pick it up in the mornings?
Central location to pick it up in the mornings.
So someone at the central location must know what time they're picking up the truck. They're not just leaving their home and starting their route.
Correct, yes. And it's, it's a central location, I mean, we're not a big shop. It's a little storage area. We keep our truck parked somewhere, and we keep our bins stocked.
Right, but they have to get the keys unless they take the key.
They take, they take the keys home.
But you could hold the keys till seven o'clock.
Yeah, abso- absolutely, yeah. And to, and to my knowledge, this, the, the noise ordinance is a residentially zoned area. Uh, we do pick up a lot on Middle Sound, Murrayville Road, Quarters Neck Road. And to my knowledge, that's not technically residentially zoned until we get into a neighborhood. So we do have the guys leave the, leave the stop at six o'clock now. We try to pick up those roads and then get into the neighborhoods at seven.
You, you told them all the calls that you'd gotten. I mean, what happened?
No, I, so it, it's tough to say, um.
Are they still working for you?
They're, they're still, they get up, they, they go and pick up. They're reliable guys. I think it was, again, they were two one-off locate, one-off pickups, and I think they would just try to go and pick that up to knock it out so they could finish the rest of the route.
But at the end of the day, the buck has to stop with somebody. You're the boss man.
Great, hundred percent.
And, um, you figured out after you got in trouble that you could do things like spread the routes out over more days, start later. So these were options and opportunities that were available to you previously, and it, it, here's how I see it. You made a determination that you would be able to have a more efficient route, have your guys out on the road for less amount of time, quicker, easier, make more money. I, I get that. But there are rules for a reason. And you don't get to pick and choose which of the rules that you're going to follow. If you do pick and choose, then there are consequences. The consequence in this instance was to tell you that there are a variety of different penalties that can be assessed against you, including the revocation of your franchise agreement with the county. Here's what I'm concerned about. If we're going to start taking the approach that we're going to give people five chances anytime before we take some serious action, that's essentially telling a bunch of people in society, you got four get-out-of-jail-free cards. We, we shouldn't set that standard. We should make very clear to people that there are rules and there are consequences for not following the rules. That's part of why I am, I'm obviously not happy about this. I said it on Thursday, I said it today, and look, I'm a small business owner. I want to support small businesses. The last thing that I want to do is put somebody out of business that is trying hard to make a living for themselves and their family and put other people to work. I'm sensitive to that. But at the same time, you don't get to just do whatever you want. And what was missing in your presentation, in my estimation, was, and you did sort of acknowledge it at the end, you, you didn't say sorry to these people. You, you should say sorry to these people that had to reach out to us, and we had to coordinate with our staff, we had to get the people over the landfill involved, we had to get the Sheriff's Office involved. That's a lot of work that the public has to pay for in the form of taxes because you weren't doing what you were supposed to do, even though you later decided to, but again, only after you got in enough trouble. What do you think, you should, what do you, if, if you were in my position, what would you do?
It's tough, it's, I mean, it's tough to say.
I mean, you can understand my position, right? It is tough to say. I'm sensitive to you and your needs. But I'm also sensitive to the people that live in this community that look to me and the other people up here to enforce the rules and regulations and to stand up for them whenever somebody doesn't do what they're supposed to do. That's what I was elected to do, stand up for the people. Everybody up here was. And they don't know how to fix a situation whenever a trash truck comes in at four thirty in the morning and won't stop. So they reach out to people like us, and then after all those instances, we finally get to where we are today. I don't know what to say. I, I, this ain't right. We shouldn't be here. We shouldn't be having this hearing. Shouldn't have put all these public resources in furtherance of something that could have been solved by you doing the right thing from the very beginning.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jordan, why did you continue this hearing twice before this?
Uh, so I, I do, I work a full-time job at a bank, and I do, I do quite a bit of traveling for work.
This is a side gig for you, then, in other words.
So originally, why I started Seahawk Sanitation is because I bought property over in Ogden area. And I got the corporate provider, kind of got spun around with the corporate provider, skipped my trash. I'd call them, they wouldn't come back, they'd raise my bill. And I finally was like, I want to provide some, something to the people in my area who are going through the same issue with a consistent price, consistent trash pickup, somebody that they can talk to, um, on the phone versus having to go to corporate America. And I started that, to do that, with no true expectation, and it's kind of just grown to three hundred and fifty cans organically.
You see the irony in what you just told me, correct? You, after being mistreated by your corporate trash pickup, you went off and fired them and started your own company. Now we have a situation, I, I'm a little surprised, uh, that you weren't more sensitive to the complaints that came in. You yourself had been in the same situation, albeit slightly different in noise as opposed to actually missing pickups. What, what were you thinking? Why, why, when you, when these complaints came in, you clearly were told, I mean, if I get a call from a, a deputy sheriff, it gets my attention, uh, and I'm sure it got yours. You know, is the dispute between you and your driver, is there a labor issue involved here, or what?
So I don't want it to, it kind of feels like maybe I'm insensitive to the situation, and I definitely don't want it to feel like that at all. We, I take, we take that very, very seriously. And I think for, it is a conversation that I had. We have two, we have, we have a guy that gets on the back of the truck, and we have the guy that's driving. And this is something, whenever it came up, that I notified them about immediately. And I think it's, we, we do, we run, we run smaller trucks. The trucks do take about six to eight stops before you actually have to do the compacting. So it is just the tipping, and it's one, it was one stop, and they were out of the neighborhood. So I personally think that maybe they thought if they didn't, didn't slam the can around, or if they were quiet with how they tipped the can, that maybe they could get, they could get away with it, pick it up quieter than what has been, and get out of the neighborhood. And unfortunately, that didn't happen, and that's when Sergeant Moore called me back again and told me about the situation.
Did Sergeant Moore have to call you more than once?
Me and Sergeant Moore talked for probably two to three weeks. And it was, hey, what, hey, this is what, this is what we're doing. Hey, we talked to the customer. This is the situation. Hey, have you heard any, have you got any other complaints? This is when we got in today. I can see that we got in at this time. And it was, it was an ongoing conversation between the two of us.
Jordan, it looks like you got a little bit in over your head. Is what it amounts to. This board is not in the business to throw businesses out of business. But as Commissioner Scalise very forcefully said, we set up a, a set of rules, and we expect that to be followed. And it sends a very poor message, you know, to the rest of the community. It's doing everything they can to follow those rules. That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Hey, I have two questions. One, do you let your drivers know the rules before they go out or when you hire them?
Yes.
Okay. Second question is, do you think four thirty is too early?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ready to take? Y'all ready to vote?
I mean, maybe ask the franchisee if he has anything that he wants to say before we close this thing.
Uh, I think I've, I think ultimately, if I could go back and do this all over again and set up a situation where we were a four, four-day route versus just a two and try to cram it in, make sure we're starting at a specific time, make sure we have things in place to ensure that that's happening, I would go, I would go back and do that based on how, based on what this has caused to, to the residents that we've disturbed.
Do you want to get a motion?
Mr. Chair, what are our choices?
Our, our choices are, we can, um, make a motion for revocation, or another motion for revocation with staying effect, which would be like ninety days. And if anybody called in that ninety-day period, it's all over. Wouldn't be able to come back here. And the third was, is rejecting the revocation.
Um, I'm struggling with this, Mr. Chair. I mean, I've already admitted, I, I've got two minds. One is that we need to make an example out of this situation, and another is that it is important to show that we have the ability to give people second chances to do the right thing.
Mr. Scalise, if I could just jump in, I think there's another point to what you're saying. It's also supporting our staff.
Yes.
Uh, both our county manager and, uh, our environmental manager, Joe Slayman, work pretty darn hard. And, uh, you know, they don't take the recommendation lightly. I know they don't. And they look to us for support.
I agree with that.
So what?
Yeah, actually, I think that's a very important point, Commissioner Zappel. We ought to support our staff in the assessment that they made here after being activated by our community. We ought to support the Sheriff's Office and the work that they put forth. We ought to support landfill and the work that they put forth. I'm prepared to make a motion for revocation. A move for franchise revocation for Seahawk Sanitation because despite notifications by the Recycling and Solid Waste Director and Deputy Sheriff, nuisance practices and noise continued off for, over several months, disturbing the peace, comfort, and repose of residents in the early morning hours in violation of county ordinance. That's my motion.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, pal.
Next is Presentation in the New Hanover County Water Quality Monitoring Program, two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-five, final report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, again, I'm Brad Rosoff. I'm a marine biologist with Coastal Protection Engineering here in Wilmington. And I was, uh, just looking at my databases and records. I've stood before you here. This is my seventeenth year in a row standing before you to give you an update on your water quality monitoring program. So if I look familiar- So if I look familiar but a little older, that, that's, that's why. So what I'd like to do is share with you the results from this past year's water quality monitoring effort that we've provided for you all. And before I jump into the results, what I'll first do is kinda give you a little context and orient you with where we do what we do and how we do what we do. Um, and then I'll share with you those results. So let's see here. Um, jumping right in now, we are collecting a wide range of water quality samples throughout a network of eight tidal creeks in the unincorporated portion of New Hanover County. And you can see on the screen right there, there's colored watershed areas, those, that those are the creeks in which we're sampling from. Um, that includes Island Creek and Futch Creek and Putch Creek and Pages Creek on the northeast portion of the county. Uh, Futch Creek and Pages Creek both drain out into the intracoastal waterway. All the other creeks drain out into the Cape Fear River. That also includes Prince George Creek up in the northwestern portion of the county, Smith Creek, as well as down south Barnard's Creek, Moth Creek and Lord's Creek. So collectively, within these eight tidal creeks, we've got twenty sampling sites. So some of these creeks only have one sampling site, others have up to four. Um, it all depends on the configuration, the size and extent of, of those creeks and also how we best wanna allocate those resources to keep our fingers on the pulse on the water quality. Um, and along with those tidal creeks, back in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, we also started collecting water quality data within the fresh, the freshwater lake in Airly Gardens. There we collect three water quality, uh, monitoring samples, sampling sites. Um, so that's geographically where we're doing our efforts. Now to share with you a little bit of what we do and how we do it. And first of all, what I'll be reporting to you this evening is our monthly sampling results over the twelve-month period extending from July twenty twenty-four through this past June in twenty twenty-five. Uh, we collect that data again annually, it's ongoing, we're still doing it, but we uh, kinda gather for this annual report. It ends in every, uh, end of every June. And so it takes a few months to compile this data, get you this final report that's in your agenda package tonight. So that's the timeframe. Um, but what do we do? We go out on three consecutive days every month to hit up these twenty sampling sites and we try to collect the data as close as we can to the same tidal cycle. Uh, we always collect it on that outgoing high tide as best we can. So then we're getting that kinda same apples-to-apples slug of water as it comes out of the system. If we did it kinda haphazardly, we'd see different types of trends coming throughout the area based off the, the characteristics of these creeks. So we always try to capture it on that same outgoing tide. And we go out there on three days in a row, um, generally speaking, and we collect three different types of data. One, physical parameters, and to collect that data, we, uh, put a probe into the water and collect instantaneously data pertaining to things like temperature, pH, salinity and something called conductivity, which is very similar, as well as dissolved oxygen and a few other, um, turbidity and a few other parameters. Um, so we can collect that data instantaneously and see how things are looking there. But we also collect water samples that are brought to some contract labs, um, for what we call biological parameters. So in the tidal creeks, we collect what's called chlorophyll. So take a water sample, it's analyzed lab, lets us know how much, uh, chlorophyll is in there, which is an indicator on potentially algal blooms, that's another, uh, metric for water quality. And also something that's called Enterococcus bacteria. Now Enterococcus bacteria is a suite or, or it's an indicator of fecal contamination in the water. It's a bacteria that resides in the warm-blooded guts of all warm-blooded animals, um, dogs, raccoons, deer, but people as well. So when you see that high level of bacteria, it doesn't necessarily mean hands-off, it's a human contamination problem, which can be problematic, um, but it can be from other suites of animals as well, but it's something to keep an eye on, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit. Um, we also collect in Airly Gardens what we're calling these chemical parameters, and these are water samples that are analyzed for nutrients, things like nitrogen and ortho-phosphate, things that are used, as you know, when you're gardening, if you wanna make your plants grow, you give them nutrients. And so we see high levels of nutrients in these water samples, it can be an indicator that will see higher levels of algal growth in the water as well, another metric of water quality. So that's what, how we do, that's where we do it and that's how we do it. So now just kinda jump into the, the results from the past twelve months of sampling. And what you'll see before you now is a pretty simplistic slide that shares our overall generalized results from each of the eight tidal creeks, along with the four parameters that have, uh, exceedance toler, or, or thresholds attributed to them for things such as turbidity, dissolved oxygen, chlorophyll and Enterococcus. And what we've done is kinda whittled down, rather than showing you a bunch of numbers and statistics, good, fair and poor, really easy way to look at this and how these creeks rate for these four parameters, so we can help kinda give you that qualitative view of water quality. And good in this sense means if we see over the course of that twelve months, so twelve sampling sites, when we see less than ten percent of exceedances for any of those standards, we get a good, a fair is between ten percent and twenty-five percent exceedances over that time period. And if we have greater than twenty-five percent of exceedances for any given parameter, that gets that poor, that red, um, mark there. And so the good news of this year is if you look at both turbidity and chlorophyll across the board for all eight tidal creeks, we see nothing but good. So we've done really well again this year, and that's the common theme we've seen and I've reported to you year after year. Those two, um, parameters have always been, generally speaking, with very few, uh, exceptions, good. So that's great news. Dissolved oxygen, um, you see a lot of green on the screen and a couple of pores on there, um, little asterisks there, I guess I'll say, is the two creeks where you see the pores, both Island Creek and Prince George Creek. Those are both located, located in the northern portion of the county, um, relatively less populated compared to other, of other watersheds which we're monitoring. And those creeks are characterized by, generally speaking, a little more slower moving waters, a little swampier waters. It's a little more, um, natural to have lower dissolved oxygen in those two, uh, watersheds. So we're not too concerned when we see those, um, red marks for those two creeks. I should note, for this year, we actually saw improvements, um, on three of those creeks for dissolved oxygen, uh, both Futch, Moths and Pages Creek, all went from fair from last year to good this year. So that's a, a nice little positive to see this year. Um, on the Enterococcus front, uh, the good news is we see a lot of good up there with only a few sites that have that fair rating, um, over in Moths Creek, Pages Creek and Smith Creek. Again, we saw a few improvements there as well. Moths Creek last year was poor, so it improved to fair, that's a good statement to say. And in Prince George Creek went to fair, uh, from fair to good. So we saw some improvements there as well. So the last twelve months, I can say, compared to previous years, things look generally a little bit better. But the one thing I do wanna focus on, uh, before we move on to our results on Airly Gardens, um, are these long-term trends that we're seeing in Enterococcus bacteria. And this is a fairly busy, noisy-looking chart, I know I have it for you, but again, you see the eight creeks across, across the top of the board there. Um, and each year, our annual results, the summary reports for Enterococcus specifically, and you can see over time, pretty generally, uh, this kinda cascade of a lot of red that's diminished over time, which is a great thing. Um, we've seen several of these creeks maintain, have, have actually improved over years and maintained a good level. Look at Bernard's Creek, for example. Um, but Bernard's, Cruck, uh, Futch Creek and, uh, Lord's Creek, as well as Island Creek, which we only started sampling from several years ago, all of them doing really well for bacteria over, uh, the recent, long-term at least. Um, we're still seeing some issues of bacteria in Moths Creek, which had improved from chronically poor over time. There've been some, uh, improvements with, uh, those neighborhoods where we sampled from that had previously been on septic tanks, they've been put online with centralized sewer over years, and I think we've seen some improvements, most likely because of that. However, Pages Creek has been kinda the redhead stepchild in this program for a number of years now. Um, and we could talk to, uh, I could talk to you a little bit about that in greater detail, um, if you have any questions as we get through. But one thing I can note is we have three sampling sites in Pages Creek. One is located at the mouth of the creek. That sampling site has basically looked clean and good. We don't see a lot of high levels of bacteria in that sampling site. We get a lot of dilution from the intracoastal waterway that kinda ebbs and flows through that sampling site. However, the two sites that we monitor are further upstream, up in the Bay Shore neighborhood, that's where we've been seeing these higher levels of bacteria. Um, in fact, I think we saw over the long term, at one of the sites, forty-five percent of the time, we've seen an exceedance in that bacteria level, that Enterococcus standard. And the other site, it was about fifty-three percent of the time over long term. So we've seen quite a bit of bacteria in that area. I could, I should note, though, over the past three years, we've seen a reduction or an improvement from one of those sites to only about nineteen percent per year. So something's going on up there, we've been keeping an eye on it for years, I've reported to you each year, some of the efforts that we've tried to investigate what's going on there, and those efforts continue, uh, to, to this day. Uh, but I do wanna switch gears quickly to the results in Airly Gardens. We've been monitoring, as I mentioned before, three sites in this freshwater lake, it's a ten acre, ten acre lake. And you can see the map there, kinda, you see this kinda transect we monitor from what we call AG Inn, that's the kinda input area where we see, um, some culverts that take water off of Airly Road, goes through a little constructed wetland and enters into the lake. That water slowly kinda migrates through this fresh, freshwater lake, and the central one is at a floating dock, that's why it's called AGFD for floating dock, that's just our nomenclature for where we sample in the center. And the last sampling site is closer to where there's an outfall, um, that connects to Bradley Creek. Now again, it's not tidal, we don't get an exchange from, from Bradley Creek into the lake, but the water, all the runoff goes off into Bradley Creek. Um, and so again, it mentioned before, we collect those same physical parameters, we collect chlorophyll, uh, levels, we do not collect bacteria levels, people are not recreating in those waters, people are not harvesting shellfish, so there's no really reason to keep an eye out for bacterial contamination for humans. Um, rather, we're looking at those nutrient levels, cause we wanna see how those nutrients are modulating, how much chlorophyll, uh, is being produced and how much algae is being produced in the lake. And the results from this past twelve years, again, turbidity looks good, dissolved oxygen looks good in two of the three sampling sites. However, as we've seen in years past, the water that gets into the creek usually starts off with low dissolved oxygen, where it's kinda stagnating through those culverts on the, basically it's the runoff coming from Airly Road. And the chlorophyll levels, however, have, uh, increased as you go through the lake. Typically, what we see is those nutrient levels, as they get into the lake, it helps spawn or fuel the algal growth. So as we kinda move that water through the lake, we see the algal level grow up, and that's why we're seeing high levels of chlorophyll. And that chart that I show you on the bottom on your screen right now, just shows that average amount of these nutrients over time. So this is cumulative for all three sites over time, and you've seen, um, higher levels of these nutrients over the years. So more and more runoff is most likely laden with more and more nutrients getting into the lake. We did see last year, you could see that dip down in twenty-three, twenty-four, but it kinda came up again this last year a little bit as well. So we've been keeping an eye on that as well. So for water quality results in kinda general terms for Airly Gardens, as I mentioned earlier, there is this kind of long-term trend of increasing levels of nutrients over time that helps spawn some of this chlorophyll A levels that we're seeing, that's showing up as algal blooms. You know, it's kind of unsightly to see these algal blooms in the creek if you're a visitor, uh, tourist seeing the area. And also, it's not healthy for the wildlife that resides in the creek. It can cause fish, uh, kill, uh, kill-offs and the like as well. Um, and we've been seeing those higher levels in the central portion and that outer portion of the lake, um, while it's a little bit lower in that input area. And finally, there were constructed wetlands, uh, that were placed within Airly Gardens close to that intake area. Um, there was also dredging that was able to remove some of this kinda looser organic matter that helps, um, kind of harbor some of the bacteria that could be sucking out some of the oxygen in there as the plant matter dies. Um, dredging occurs, removes some of that, that should, should be, uh, hypothetically, theoretically improving the water quality in the lake. Uh, we haven't seen that really in the data pan out just yet, but some of these things can take some time to really, uh, show up on paper as we're seeing this. So we're, we're hoping, fingers crossed, that will continue. And I believe that Airly Gardens has a management plan as well, where they'll perform additional dredging in the future as well. And now just going back to our overall conclusions on the tidal creek component of our study. Um, as I mentioned in that chart, all that green for turbidity, um, and chlorophyll levels as far as good, uh, we saw that across the board, which is great. That's a continued, uh, trend that we've seen over the years. Dissolved oxygen, we've seen that kinda mixed bag here and there, it improved this year a little bit compared to recent years, and we do see that trend over each individual year. In the summertime, dissolved oxygen gets sucked up a lot more, we see less of it. In the wintertime, we see higher levels of dissolved, dissolved oxygen, that's just a physical property of temperature on these, on, on water in general, and its capacity to hold dissolved oxygen. Um, as far as the Enterococcus, this past year, we did see a general, um, improvement over the long-term study period for Enterococcus bacteria. However, we still do see that elevated levels of bacteria within, uh, Pages Creek, particularly in that northern portion of the upper reaches of the creek near the Bay Shore community. So that's something that we've been talking with, we've heard from some of you, and we've been looking to plan for the future to, uh, take additional steps for that as well to address it. And lastly, as I mentioned, the water quality within Airly Garden appears to be driven in part by all this, uh, nutrient, that nutrients that are getting into the creek from that stormwater runoff, which helps, uh, reduce dissolved oxygen and increase that, uh, the chlorophyll levels within the creek and spawns some of those, uh, algal blooms. So I believe, yep, that is all I have for you this evening for our annual report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Overall trend, of course, since two thousand eight is improvement, but it looks like we're seeing some continued improvement even in the more immediate past to where we are today. I've asked this question of you, I guess this is probably the third time that I've asked it, are we doing everything we can from your perspective? And I know that you're just here to provide the report, but I mean, what, what are we not doing that we could be doing to help this trend in the right direction? And, and it is sort of a leading question, because it is my understanding that we're making every effort to see improvements in these others, but there's some things that are beyond our knowledge base, beyond our control. Can you kind of elaborate on some of the unknowns that are out there?
And you're talking widespread?
Yeah, exactly.
County-wide, water quality, generalized, it's, it's a tough question to answer, and I hate to punt, I'm not gonna punt on you, I'm trying to think of, of some of these things, because the, the fact of the matter is the county does, um, involve themselves in a number of measures to do just this. There are various campaigns out, there's water, watershed management plans that have been, um, enacted upon, there's measures within those watershed management plans that have discrete, um, intangible measures that you can take, this, the pickup, you know, scoop the poop campaigns, things like that, um, the rain barrels and, uh, insulation of, of rain gardens, these are all things that help reduce the quantity of water that gets into these tidal creeks and it helps improve the quality of the waters.
Even those little measures can make a big difference.
That's right.
I think we actually have a community meeting with the folks who live up around Pages Creek tomorrow.
Yep.
To, um, help talk about some of those things, like the rain barrels and all those little efforts that actually we can individually make do, uh, make a collective difference in the community and perhaps help to explain some of the trending in the right direction. Pages Creek is one of those areas where if you look at the last several, several years, at least, some of the, the data seems to suggest that we're doing a little bit better than we were before.
Yeah, i- i- it's, it's also hard to make some inferences, sometimes we're looking at twelve samples over the course of a year, we're going out monthly. So at that kind of coarse scale, we're looking at a system, it's like going to a doctor and they're giving you a quick physical, hey, you look pretty good, you, you don't look like you're dying today. Um, so we can get a little bit better than that, but we're also not going, undergoing this rigorous physical with stress tests and all that for this program. So with the amount of effort that we're seeing here, we can give you this relatively coarse scale assessment, and I'm making these generalizations, good, fair and poor, because the statistical, uh, rigor that, we really can't provide really statistical rigor, um, for these sorts of data that we're collecting to give you greater insight. But on the high level, what you're asking, I think the county's in the right direction with doing the right things, and when we see challenges come up, like what we've seen in Pages Creek, we're seeing the county kinda take, step forward and say, hey, there are actions that we can take to try and investigate how we can solve these problems. So over the course of the year, of the years, uh, there's been a number of, uh, studies and programs to try and figure out where this bacteria is coming from in Pages Creek and how to ameliorate that situation. And I know with that watershed management plan you mentioned, there's a meeting tomorrow night, some of those steps will be discussed there. Um, and there's further talks about, um, what we can do next as far as looking for the source of where this bacteria is coming from specifically within that watershed as well.
Part of why this is also just so important is that it, it does convey to the public that we care enough to spend time on engaging you and your team to go out and do this, but also we are meeting with the, the members of the community, including at Pages Creek, the, the county manager and I, and the director of Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, and any number of the, uh, folks who are in government have met and followed up with these folks because whenever they bring a frustration to us, we, we care about that, we wanna fix it. And we're as frustrated as anybody, right, Mr. Manager, whenever we have a hard time getting to the bottom of why something is the way that it is, but I, I am encouraged to see that we appear to be trending in the right direction.
Yeah, I could say, um, just from my, my standpoint, like you said, I'm just the guy collecting the water and, and ramping up the numbers for you, but it's been impressive to see the kinda all-hands-on-deck, um, process, which I feel like the county's gone through by bringing in those various entities that have a stake in the game and talking to the stakeholders and the citizens on basically bringing in their inputs as well on, on what's going on out there and how to fix the situation. Going back to twenty, oh, I don't know what it was, two thousand and twelve or so, we saw down in the Moths Creek watershed, there were some problems with, uh, the water quality. Um, CFUA at the time was looking at getting grants to take folks from septic to set centralized wastewater in that area, and the data that we were able to provide helped, I think, provide the justice, or, or the justification for that. And that was one of those kind of adaptive management things that I thought, you know, this was a case where data helped actually take action, the county took, took action with that, with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Uh, let's go back to the Airly Road problem, Brad, and good to see you again, by the way.
Good to see you.
Yeah. I think there's a, a correlation to the amount of development that's happening directly across Airly Road from, uh, you know, Airly Gardens that's happening there, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I, I know when the first year, going back twenty twenty-two- Yeah, I know when the first year, going back 2022, I can't remember when that development was going on. At that time, there were some issues with silt fencing and some runoff that was occurring in that area.
Yes.
I'm not sure as far as what sort of mitigative actions were taken, but we had seen that water quality basically increase with levels of nutrients over time, which indicates that there's some delivery of nutrients from runoff.
You're trying to be very careful with your words there, but I think just, I go down there frequently and there, that development has reached the stage of a lot of lawns, et cetera, being put in, fertilizers, nutrients, et cetera. This is not only, you know, increasing problem, it's going to be an ongoing problem that we have there. You know, would any increased monitoring help? Because it is a major issue for us, you know, at Airly Gardens, you know, in the lake. And so how do we get a handle on this? Do you, are you prepared to give any kind of recommendations on what we can do to stop or manage it better than what's happening now?
Yeah, the one thing, we're sampling from that one site that we're calling the AG Inn, which is where that one major influx of the stormwater runoff is kind of channeled to. I believe there's a few other spots as well where the water is getting channeled in. And I don't know what sort of infrastructure there, if it's a culvert or whatever it might be. Might be interesting to see what else is getting in from that portion as well and see kind of quantify what levels of nutrients getting in there as well. I don't know of any stormwater ditches that are across the street where that water is accumulating from, but that's something we can look into and maybe that's a spot where we could look that would help pinpoint maybe where some of this nutrient-laden water is coming from or originating from. But also speaking to the folks, you know, if there's an HOA, folks should be mindful on their applications, when to apply, not around heavy rains and that sort of thing.
So is this something that we can ask you to do to take a harder look essentially at that, you know, the water coming from across the street? Because that's, in this case, we have significant data going back many years of what it was like before there was no development. And now we do. And we also know that we're having issues, major issues in the, in the lake itself with algae blooms and et cetera. Thank you, if you could do that.
We could definitely take a look at that.
Also, I'm going to take, you know, you and I go back and forth almost every year about the enterococcus. And I know you're trying to keep it at a very high level. I understand that, but I have great concern because it's, all of these creeks have the potential because of the amount of development of having human interactions to it. And when I see, as I do in your report, you know, 2,200 parts per million, 2,000 parts per million, 3,500 parts per million in these various creeks here and in Pages Creek, seeing it happen, you know, multiple times, I think six times exceeding the state recommended level at 500 parts per million. That's, that's a real, you know, red flag or, you know, alarm sounding there. Do you have an opinion yet out of all this? Do you think it is all from, you know, animal poop runoff? Or, I know in Pages Creek, we've been tracing, using everything from thermal imaging to literally people putting on mukluks, you know, up to their chest and walking up there looking for the leak or the leaks and with no success. And I'm not quite sure what else we can do, although technology keeps providing us with more and more tools, but there's clearly something that's ongoing in Pages Creek. So leave that one aside for a second. And on the others, do you have an opinion? Is, you know, why are we seeing this continuing with all the education that we do in the county? And, you know, certainly builders are carefully, they're not leaving septic systems open, pumping in, but you know, how do we, for instance, in Motts Creek, we got, you know, 3,500 parts per million of enterococcus in what is very, you know, it's not a slam, but a loose monitoring system. It's not very heavy monitoring. So, you know, if we caught it at 3,500, how do we know it's not 5,000 sometime? Or 2,000 sometime? Anyway, there seems to be a spike in there and that's in January. Sorry, I went on a little bit there, Brad. Can you respond to any one of those questions?
Yeah, yeah. First, to address what you were just bringing up as far as the disparate high levels, these one-offs that we see throughout the tidal creeks.
Yeah.
For one, just to remind folks, enterococcus bacteria is an indicator species of fecal contamination from any warm-blooded animal. So birds, pets, raccoons, deer, whatever might be there, including humans. So the EPA set forth a standard that, they did studies years ago that basically said if you have a level of X, there's a correlation to human illness or you can get sick. So there are, when you see high levels of fecal contamination, there's usually other things that could be lurking in that water, human pathogens, viruses and the like. So that's where we're coming from. When we see that standard that's been breached, that's why we say, hey, there's a problem. So that's just acknowledge what we're looking at in the water. As far as when we see a high level, 2,000, 10,000, whatever it might be, what they call colony-forming units, the way we look at it in a lab plate, when you see those high levels, you know, a spike of this bacteria that grows in the lab when you look at a water sample, it doesn't mean it's coming from a human, but you've got to be wary that it could be. So one thing to remember in the system is when you take a water sample, it's that one snapshot in time. There could have been a duck that swam by, there could have been a raccoon that was feeding the area. That's acknowledged, but at the same time, you've got to focus on the worst case to keep everybody safe. And so when we look at this in some of these areas that are not as developed as some other areas, it's less likely, most likely, it's less likely that it's coming from a human source. But again, we're looking at that and that's why we report to you these trends that we see. I can't tell you what needs to be done. You're going to see these blips, it's a matter of how frequently you see these blips. Unless we started sampling on a very regular basis, that will give us a little more clarity out there. But with the best data that we've got, the best bang for the buck that we've got with the effort that we're really put forth, you know, we're seeing these trends in some of these creeks improve and we're seeing some of these stay static and we're seeing some of them stay static in a place where we want them to be. And that brings us to Pages Creek. And the Pages Creek situation, we've looked at for years now, going back, we started this thing in 2007, 2008, and 2009, we did our first study to see, you know, where is this bacteria coming from? Again, it could be coming from dogs, cats, rabbits, or who knows what. We found human sources in that water. And we did a study, again, follow-up several years later. We found the human source in there again. And then we most recently did this, you know, in a broad brush watershed-level study for source tracking, as we call it, to see where the bacteria is coming from. We looked at, I think, 20 sites throughout Pages Creeks, not just in proximity to where we are sampling. We found that those hits, again, not in the lower reaches of the creek, but again, closer to where we've been sampling from. We know there's a Cape Fear Public Utility lift station nearby. We know that these folks have been converted off of septic over the years. So that's been a consideration, but the folks over at CFPUA have done a good job assessing the integrity of the lift stations and their infrastructure nearby from what I understand. And so we're kind of left scratching our heads. So right now, you all have challenged us in the past. We're trying to come together with another program. We're working with a researcher from UNC Chapel Hill who's kind of come together some of this cutting-edge technology that will help look at the source tracking further. And one improvement in the technology that's come forth over the recent years is really through the whole COVID-19 experience. You know, a lot of bad things came out of that. One good thing came from a lot of additional research. Well, they've come up with a way to look at the genetic fingerprint of the bacteria that we can sample. And not only can you say whether it's human or cat or dog or whatever, but you can also discern through a quantitative measure whether it's coming from a centralized sewage system, so from sewer versus any other, a dirty diaper that's out there, whatever, like a one-off situation. So we're looking to put together a plan right now. We've been back and forth with some scopes of work for just this. I know CFPUA has stepped forth. They were going to potentially help fund some of this study. I believe the county might as well. But to work with this researcher who can look at it to set a little bit finer detail to see whether or not there is a problem originating from the sewage system as well. So that's the next step. Unfortunately, I wish I had the silver bullet one-time fix. You throw some money and you can do the study and it's done. It's definitely stepwise and I totally appreciate the frustration because the guy who's out doing this and coming to you each year and telling you this problem persists is pretty frustrating, you know, from my point of view as well. So we're looking at this stuff continued and I'm happy to chat with you guys anytime offline to let you know a little more details, what we're looking at doing and if there's any input you all have as well, you know. I appreciate the challenge for Airly Gardens. We can come up with something there for sure. And this Pages Creek situation has persisted. Now, I know you've got the meeting tomorrow and there might be some discussion there as well from local folks. I know CFPUA is working, for example, on a rapid response program.
Right.
You may have heard where citizens can, if they see something, they'll see something, say something, they'll come out and try and take up some samples on that as well. So that's just another one of these proactive measures that I think CFPUA is trying to stay ahead of as well and going hand-in-hand with this program I just described. We're hoping to get to the bottom of it.
Commissioner Walker's got a question to ask you, sir.
Thank you. So this is probably one of the first news I had when I got elected last year. And I'm looking at, you know, the high-level stuff doesn't make it look so bad, but when you look at the long term, Pages Creek is bad, I mean, Motts Creek's bad, but Pages Creek is consistently bad.
Yeah.
So I would like to see what we can do. I mean, I would like to talk to you offline if that's possible and figure out a plan because I know that there are folks in the county that are doing some things, but I think this is super important that we find the source of this contamination, not only because we want to have healthy watersheds, but also because people have rights to the water that they live here and they should have the right to swim in it and fish in it and it be healthy. So I know probably over the years, you know, wetlands that have disappeared have probably, that would do the job of, you know, cleaning out our waters are not there anymore. That's my guess because looking at 2000, all the way from 2008 to now, I mean, that's a long time for Pages Creek to be in bad shape. And I think that we, with the technology that you just referenced and our resources and the things we can do, I think we can figure it out. It just needs concerted effort and us saying this is something that's important to us and that we really need to do. I think it's past time personally, so I hope that maybe if we can talk offline, we can figure out a plan for that. And I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Before we get to the next thing, I've got something I want to read real quick and then we'll tape it just a second, I promise you. It's about the impact of SNAP benefits not being available due to the federal government shutdown. While this is not, it's a nationwide issue, the impacts will be felt here in our community. Approximately 12,300 households in the Henry County receive monthly SNAP benefits, making up about 9% of our county's population. Many in our county rely on these funds to keep food on their table, allowing them to focus on paying for other monthly costs like utilities and housing. While families face uncertainty, your county government is working with nonprofits, churches, and local food banks to gather information on what is available in our community. I would encourage you to visit nhcgov.com/foodhelp, all one word, to see what resources are out there for those in need or how you can help your neighbors if you're able to do so. We're asking everyone in the community to help if they can, check on your neighbors, volunteer, donate, or support local food programs. Our community is known for coming together during difficult times and once again, we're being called upon to do just that. Together, we will get through this and make sure everyone has the support that they need. And this afternoon, they announced that they were giving money, SNAP money out, but it won't get out in time. There'll be a lapse and everybody won't get exactly what they need. So if any of you can help anybody, please do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, is there a, is there a phone number that somebody could call?
I have one.
We don't have one.
Food bank.
I'm sorry, who?
Food bank.
The food bank.
Okay, next is request by Attilano Cardenas and Sebastian Cardenas. Applicants on behalf of Philip and Princetta Pierce. Property areas to rezone approximately 0.39 acres located at 2624 Castle Hain Road from an existing CZDB-1 neighborhood business district to a new CZDB-1 district for the uses of a grocery store and restaurant. This is a public hearing and we will hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant and any opponents. We each be allowed 15 minutes for the presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. And first, we have staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. As you just heard, this is a request to rezone approximately 0.39 acres from an existing conditional B1 neighborhood business district to a new conditional B1 district for grocery store and restaurant. Properties along Castle Hain Road just north of the intersection with Carr Avenue. The site is bordered by commercial zoning on three sides with that transition to residential zoning to the east. This property was part of an earlier rezoning in 2012, shown here highlighted in blue, and the area that was developed into an existing family dollar highlighted in yellow. The red area is the subject parcel. From the existing concept plan, we see that while the property was included in the rezoning, there were no future plans for development, not showing any buildings or... And due to the lack of a concept plan, along with the conditions that remain tied to the parcel, a new rezoning is required to develop site. From the aerial photography, we can see the site is between two commercial uses. And site photos show the site is vacant with a few larger trees closer to the parcel Here's an example of representative development of a local grocery store with restaurant service. And this is an example of another similarly sized grocery store. This is the new proposed concept plan. It should be noted that it has been oriented with the north on the left side of the screen. Project proposes one building that will include both the grocery store and restaurant, parking in the front and side, a loading area at the rear, near the proposed dumpster. A specimen live oak tree is also in the rear. The ordinance requires permanent retention of specimen trees and the applicant has agreed to an additional condition reaffirming that the tree will be retained. Concept plan also includes transitional buffer along the rear property line. And the front of the site includes the driveway access, the location of a proposed sign, and a five-foot wide pedestrian easement, a condition carried forward from the original approval in 2012. Site will have full access to Castle Hain Road. The project will need a driveway permit, but DOT's preliminary review of the project found the proposed driveway location to generally meet their requirements. There have been a few commercial projects nearby within the last few years, and most recently, an adaptive reuse project immediately to the north for a medical office. While the approximate peak hour trips is expected to increase, the project is below the threshold that requires a traffic impact analysis. While commercially zoned, the parcel has been vacant since 2012 because of the lack of a concept plan for the site. This request would provide the opportunity for the site to be developed by an applicant that currently operates a small grocery store just south of this area and if approved, would allow the applicant to relocate and expand their business. Project aligns with two goals of the strategic plan related to workforce and economic development and community safety and well-being. The 2016 comprehensive plan designates this property as community mixed-use, which focuses on small-scale mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of travel. Planning Board considered this item at their October 2 meeting. No one spoke in opposition to the request and the planning board voted to recommend approval, finding it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed mixed uses is in line with the recommendations of the community mixed-use place type. And the request was reasonable and in the public interest because it allows for an additional grocery option for the community and will support a local business. Staff concurs with the planning Board's recommendation of approval with the following proposed conditions, which are related to the list of approved uses limited to grocery store, restaurant, and general retail, the retention of the live oak tree, the location and screening of the dumpster in accordance with the county unified development ordinance, the driveway locations consistency with DOT requirements, prohibiting a drive-through option for the restaurant, ensuring adequate parking with the required nine-by-18 parking spaces as required by the UDO, and caring for the previously approved condition for the public access easement. Should the rezoning be approved, the project would be subject to additional development review through the technical review committee. This concludes my presentation. Caitlin Surza with the WMPO and Galen Jamison with County Engineering are here for any questions. The applicant does not have a presentation, but they are available for questions as well.
Anybody have any questions?
Commissioner's apple.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Robert, thank you for picking up on the parking spaces that were noted on the site plan as too small.
That's correct.
Taken care of, right? Thank you. The, what is zoning SC?
Shopping center.
Shopping center. Shopping center. I should have got that great. And it looks like on our map that we have here, there may be, there's a reversal as to what the existing zonings were around. It looks to me as though the east and the west got flipped around. Am I right? Do you know?
If I could have the zoning map or the presentation back up, please.
Yeah. Just want to make sure that I'm seeing it right.
So here's the existing, here's the site highlighted in yellow.
Yeah.
To the north is another conditional B1 District that was just in front of the board earlier this year. It was for an adaptive reuse of an office building or a building for a medical office. The site to the south is the Family Dollar that was part of the 2012 rezoning. This is B2 across the street. And then, as you see here, this is all residential.
Across the street is the SC. You're calling it B2?
I'm sorry, you're correct. Typically, the color is red for B2.
Yeah. Caught my attention as well.
But yes, SC is something of a legacy district for that specific area of the county.
All right, LA, we're all talking about the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Was there any discussion about hours of operation?
No, sir.
And do we know whether or not they're going to be selling alcohol in the store or in the restaurant portion of the store?
I would need to defer to the applicant to answer that question.
I think, can I get answers to both of those questions, hours of operation and alcohol?
Sir.
Well, if it's a grocery store, sure, they would be selling alcohol, wouldn't they?
Well, it's a restaurant, which is a different application.
Grocery store next to it.
Right, you usually don't drink in the grocery store, unless, of course, you go to Harris Teeter these days.
I can understand, right?
Yeah. It's the restaurant application or permission in here that we're talking about that I'm just curious about.
Hours of operation run out from nine to nine every day?
Excuse me, could you give us your name?
Sebastian Cardenas.
Okay. And you're the owner of the property?
With my dad.
With my father's, yeah.
Yeah, great. So hours of operation?
Right now, it's every day from nine to nine, and we currently have an ABC permit. We sell alcohol in the store, but it's not for consumption, just to sell.
So the restaurant will not be offering drinks?
No, we plan to sell alcohol in the restaurant.
You do?
Yes.
So I get it, you're selling it in the grocery store, but you'll also allow people to drink on the premises as a part of the restaurant?
Yes.
Is it just beer and wine, or is it hard alcohol?
For the restaurant, it would, we plan to also include hard alcohol.
Robert, the hours of operation, is that consistent with the other businesses in that area, the nine to nine?
I am not familiar with the hours of operation of the other businesses in the area.
Well, I'm looking at the online here, and it looks like there's a food line across the street. They stay open pretty late, and it looks like they're surrounded by commercial properties, from what I see, that must open later than that and probably serve alcohol.
Family Dollars or what was the shop?
Yes, sir, Family Dollar.
Yeah, those are open until nine. I think they sell beer and wine there. I'm happy to have any discussion that we want to have. I am very comfortable with this application. I don't know whether or not there's any opposition, but I am prepared to proceed to the vote, and I'll move to approve it whenever the time is right, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
And just for Commissioner's apple, I appreciate those questions, but it's almost impossible for a restaurant to make it now if they don't serve alcohol. I've seen breakfast restaurants that serve alcohol, then they close at two o'clock in the day. So, and I'm okay with it, and I'll second that motion.
Mr. Cardenas, you have 15 minutes. If you have, if you want to say something, you don't have to. But if you want to, you're more than welcome to.
I don't have anything prepared, but I can answer any more questions.
Okay. Has anybody else got any more questions for him, or if not, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, public hearing is closed. If you would come back up, sir. Before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
Proceed with the vote.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed rezoning to a new CZDB-1 District. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, because the rezoning provides the types of uses recommended in the community mixed use place type. Also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest, because it allows for an additional grocery store option for the community and will support a local business. I make reference to the proposed conditions, numbers one through seven, listed in our packet. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Okay, moving on, number nine. Request by Mike Brown with Cape Fear Development. Applicant on behalf of OFSC Properties LLC, MO Dump/Lake Plus Nine LLC, and the D Webster Trash Revocable Trust Property Owners to rezone approximately 95 acres, Zone 1-2, Heavy Industrial, and approximately 13 acres, Zone I-1, Light Industrial, for a total of 108 acres located in the 3100 to 4200 block of Blue Clay Road to general use RMFL Residential Multi-Family Low Density Zoning District and removing the Special Highway Overlay District. And this, my friends, is a public hearing. We'll hear a presentation from the staff, then the applicant and any opponents will be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. And if there's more than, more than one person speaking for either side, it's a total of 15 minutes altogether. So now we will have staff presentation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 108 acres from I-1 Light Industrial and I-2 Heavy Industrial District to a general use RMFL Residential Multi-Family Low Density District. Please note, this is a straight rezoning request, so there is no concept plan and no conditions can be imposed. This site is located in the 3100 to 4200 block of Blue Clay Road and was originally zoned I-2 in 1972. The eastern portion of this site was rezoned I-1 in 2005 for compatibility with some nearby residential zoning. The aerial photography shows the site is currently wooded and some is used for agriculture. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles, showing the Blue Clay Road frontage and some of the interior of the site, noting the agricultural usage. The I-1 and I-2 districts allow several commercial and industrial uses. This slide shows some of the by right uses in these districts. The I-1 and I-2 districts allow similar uses, with one of the main differences being that the I-2 allows some uses by right that the I-1 would only allow with a special use permit. Here is an example of development in the I-1 and I-2 districts, showing some light commercial and Dutch Square and a large distribution center on US 421. The RMFL District allows mostly residential uses, along with some light civic and institutional uses to serve the residential development. The maximum residential density in the RMFL District is 10 units per acre. It does allow several different housing types by right, including single-family, duplexes, row homes, and multifamily developments. Here is an example of development in an RMFL District, showing apartments, duplexes, and single-family homes. These are all within the same development. This site currently has access onto Blue Clay Road. Future access points would be reviewed by the county, the WMPO, and NCDOT through the TRC process. There are several nearby residential and commercial developments, including the county's Blue Clay Business Park to the north and the proximity of Blue Clay Residential Development across I-140 to the south. Because this is a straight rezoning, trip generations are just a general estimate based on acreage and potential build-out. Given the mix of housing types allowed in the RMFL District, it is likely a TIA would be required for future development of this site. These student generation numbers are based on estimates, are estimates based on a maximum build-out of the site. Because this is a straight rezoning on a large site, staff have taken extra measure to outline some environmental data for this site, details which would normally be noted on a concept plan in a conditional rezoning. The site contains several acres of both the Pecoson and Swamp Forest Conservation Resources, some of which would be required to be set aside as conservation space if the site were to be developed. That means that these set-aside areas could not be developed. Please note that formal delineation of the site would be done by the applicant as part of the TRC process. This would determine the exact acreage of these resources. The applicant has already engaged with an environmental consultant to identify these resources on site. There are also portions of the site which were identified in the Northeast Flood Plane Advisory Study. While the study is not regulatory, there are similarities in the areas shown on this map and the conservation resources, so it is possible the more flood-prone areas of the site could be set aside as conservation space. This parcel fronts Blue Clay Road and is located near large-scale planned residential and industrial developments, including the proximity of Blue Clay, Blue Clay Farms, and New Hanover County's Blue Clay Business Park. The TIA for the Business Park requires a traffic light at the intersection of Blue Clay and Juvenile Center Road, providing some traffic control on this area of Blue Clay Road. While unfunded by the DOT, the site could gain improved connectivity to I-140 by a future interchange. Community services are approximately one and a half miles away at the North Chase Commercial Center. And while zoning in this area has shifted in recent years, the broader character remains primarily low-density residential and light industrial. This rezoning would support the county's strategic plan for increasing the housing supply and for preserving sensitive environmental areas. The 2016 comprehensive plan classifies this area as community mixed use. This project is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommendations for properties that are located in this place type, which aims for residential densities up to 15 units per acre. The planning board considered this item at their October 2, 2025 regular meeting. Three members of the public spoke in opposition to their request, some citing concerns with density and environmental concerns. One expressed support for the density, but stated they would have preferred a mixed-use project with some commercial uses in addition to the residential development. Some members of the planning board expressed concerns about the uses that could be developed by right on the site with the existing I-1 and I-2 zoning, stating that residential development may be preferred for this area. The planning board voted three to one to recommend approval of the rezoning, finding it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, because the RMFL District would provide uses that are in line with the community mixed use place type and can serve existing and future business and residence. The board also found recommending approval of the rezoning request was reasonable in the public interest, because the district would act as a new area for a mix of housing types. This rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, because the district provides residential densities that are in line with the recommendations for the community mixed use place type. While staff would have preferred a conditional rezoning of the site, the request is still consistent with the comprehensive plan and is compatible with this area. As a result, staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation of approval. Lastly, I'll add that if the rezoning is approved, all development would be subject to TRC and zoning compliance review in order to ensure full compliance with all ordinance requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. Galen Jamison is here with County Engineering, and Kaitlin Serza is here with the WMPO to answer any questions that come up under those topics. The applicant is here and has prepared a presentation.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the applicant presentation? Yes, 15 minutes altogether, Mr. Brown.
Gotcha. Good evening. My name is Mike Brown, a partner of Cape Fear Development. The applicant. Now, the application here before you deny is a straight rezoning request. We propose rezoning in this fashion because we think it makes sense and has a lot of practicality for this specific site. More importantly, the request is in direct alignment with the comprehensive plan designation for the parcel and the vision for this region set by all county planning documents. We recognize that your decision is not based on any specific development plans for the property. However, I want to offer some perspective on the quality of work that we aim to deliver on this site by showing you some of the examples of our projects we have developed, where the flexibility afforded by not being tied to an conditional site plan has allowed us to refine our design through multiple design iterations and integrate the built environment with natural environment and site conditions. We do pride ourselves on low impact or given consideration to the land around us and honoring the trees and the green space, et cetera. The key component of these efforts has been making sure that each community is complementary to the natural environment and has functional outdoor spaces that help us create an authentic sense of place and a high-quality aesthetic. As outlined in the staff report in the agenda packet, this rezoning request pertains to 108-acre parcel located on the southeastern boundary of Blue Clay Road and just north of I-140. The 2016 comprehensive plan's future land use map proposes a community mixed use place type for this area, and the requested residential multi-family low-density zoning at 10 units per acre is aligned with the overall recommendations of the comp plan. In fact, as staff pointed out in their report, the density we are requesting is actually lower than what the comp plan outlines for this area, but is appropriate for this site, and we think more than adequate. The addition of residential on this site will serve as a key component of creating an organic, functional, and attractive mixture of complementary uses in this area. Given the site conditions and natural features, the requested zoning would allow for a more authentic and aesthetically pleasing, environmentally sensitive design than with the existing by right I-1 and heavy industrial zoning, which is in place today, which would yield larger building footprints and uses that would conflict with the natural features on site and the tree canopy, as well as the neighboring residential uses. With thoughtful residential development, these features can be better protected, a use more responsive to the current needs of the county than the current zoning would support. Given the size of the parcel, we would look towards a mixture of housing types with smaller footprints, together with significant preserved green space, creating cohesive neighborhood and a sense of place. This will serve the interwoven equity theme that's set forth in the comp plan by bringing underserved housing type to this region of the county. The 2016 comprehensive plan encourages investment in community infrastructure, along with infill development to maximize the value of that infrastructure. CFUA and New River County partnered on the installation of water and sewer along Blue Clay Road to promote growth and economic development in this region. This project will provide an immediate return on this public investment through connection fees and rate income. I looked at the SDCs earlier today, and they exceed a million dollars, not to mention the rate income that would come after that. So that's return on the county's investment. The property is within close proximity to nearby employers, with General Electric's campus, as well as Cape Fear Communities campus, only 1.3 miles from the site, as well as North Car Industrial Park to the south, and county's Blue Clay Commerce Park just to the north of the site. This rezoning will thus serve the resilient economy theme within the comprehensive plan. The requested zoning pairs well with neighboring residential, PD Plan Development, RMFL, and existing and proposed light industrial and business-oriented zoning classifications in the greater vicinity. This will encourage the planned cohesive growth for the area, whereby residential and commercial development support one another. The proposed RMFL zoning would encourage the comprehensive plan's goal of developing healthy communities, locating a number of citizens closer to recreational properties. The subject property is only 1.25 miles from Cape Fear Albinus Park, located on the south end of Blue Clay Road, and is also within walking distance of the popular trash family farms. We have closely studied the Northern Watershed mapping documents and discussed those findings with staff. We are very, very mindful and appreciative of this information, and any future plans would take this information into account. This will be closely studied, and we aim to avoid any flood plains. We're also working with wetland soil consultants to ensure that we would avoid and are able to plan around conservation resources and actually highlight them and make them amenities to our plan. The proposed zoning would yield a far more beneficial outcome for the county and a superior aesthetic than would the development under I-1 and Heavy Industrial, a use type that dates back to the early 70s and which carries very intensive uses, which are no longer appropriate fit for this area and are in conflict with the comprehensive plan. This zoning is fully aligned with New River County's planning documents and the objectives for future growth and community development, as outlined in the comprehensive plan. We appreciate your consideration of this application, and I'm here and available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we're going to hold on to questions until after we go through everything.
Thank you.
Okay, next is 15 minutes for the opposition, and the first one signed up is Adrian Barber. Okay, next is fifteen minutes for the opposition, and the first one signed up is Adrian Garber.
Hello, my name is Adrian Garber, and I live in New Hanover County. I drove by this lot. I'm waiting for a slide. And it's a beautiful piece of property. I ask that you find recommending denial of the rezoning request to be reasonable and in the public interest because of the following reasons. A large portion of this property is in the Special Highway Overlay District. Our Unified Development Ordinance describes that the purpose of this district is to protect the natural beauty and scenic vista that exists along the interstate highways, and it further states that the protection of these highways is important and necessary to maintain and preserve the natural woodlands and open spaces that characterize these roadways. The continued protection of these scenic highways is a valuable asset to the county's tourism economy and enhances the attractiveness of the county for trade and investment. Why would we ignore this district for yet more high-density rental apartments? This is the proximity development in Carolina Beach. A development of this nature would bring an additional 1,000 residential units plus an unknown amount of commercial space to Blue Clay Road and eliminate the much larger setback of the Special Highway Overlay District. And while the current zoning of I-1 allows heavy industry, at least it provides the protection of a few more square feet of our natural woodlands, and maybe we could bring some much-needed jobs here instead of more roofs. There is no exit on NC-140 where Blue Clay Road crosses underneath it. This would require the existing businesses, plus the residents of all 1,000 dwellings, plus however much commercial traffic to and from this development, to all use Blue Clay Road. How much commercial development is allowed in addition to the 1,000 residential units anyway? And shouldn't this be a conditional zoning rezoning request? I ask that you find denial of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the traffic impact of a development this size is too much for Blue Clay Road, and the NC DOT will not allow direct access onto NC-140 from this site. There is a cemetery on this property, and the existing zoning for this land contains protections for our natural woodlands through its larger setbacks. Changing this land to residential removes these protections through decreasing setbacks on all sides. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Ms. Nadine Bremmich.
Good evening. I don't have a slide presentation. I just have a couple of statements and questions for you to all consider.
If you can speak into the microphone, ma'am.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. I just have a couple of questions and concerns or statements that you might have. Okay. Well, one, Ms. Garber and I agree, the questions that we have, my first one is that she just spoke about is a family cemetery that is on Blue Clay Road, is the Grady Cemetery that's been there for a number of years. In fact, we have several generations that's buried there, and one of the concerns is we know that we have access to the cemetery, but our concern is the privacy of that cemetery and the proximity of this development that's going to be to the cemetery. And since there's no plans, the question is, how can you rezone when there's no plans? Next question would be that goes into the rezoning. Why is it such a request of a multifamily zoning when there's other zoning conditions that are available, and why the high-density one? I know they say low-density, but that would be really a high-density for that area. And one of the questions that was brought out too was the shod, the removal of the shod. The reason why there are those tree barriers out there is to save the farming land that was there, that there used to be a farmland out there, and now it's not. But those, we call them wind barriers or windbreakers, those areas saved us during the recent hurricanes. I know that for a fact because I live out there, and I was there when Fran and Bertha and the most recent one Florence. So that saved me and my home and the cemetery that's out there. So these are questions that we have of concern about why that particular zoning. We all know that it's probably going to be rezoned, but why that particular rezoning without plans to show where it's going to be, the impact? Why rezone something without any plans? It just doesn't make sense to me without conditions. And they brought out about the area, that shod, that the animals. We have, I listed about six or seven different types of animals that's out there, from wild turkeys to the hawks that's in that area. So if you get rid of those trees, you're getting rid of that environment for those animals. And then also, we have Venus flytraps out there. We have all those what we call trumpet plants out there that are native to North Carolina. So if you get rid of those shods, you're getting rid of all that environment that is native to North Carolina, which makes it North Carolina. And this is, it's a swamp area out there. Our elders used to call that black swamp. So if you get rid of that, you get rid of that root system that will take up that water when those hurricanes come through. So these are questions that we all should have concern about for that area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brown, you have five minutes of rebuttal. Would you like to answer any of those questions?
Yes, I'll try to cover as many as I can. If I miss something, please feel free to ask me a question. So we look at this as a down zoning from heavy industrial to a residential zoning, and we followed the Comprehensive Plan to get to this zoning. It's a large tract. On a smaller tract, it might be possible to do a conditional zoning, but on 108 acres, the reality is to develop this property out thoughtfully, and over time it'd probably take five, 10 years. And with the Comprehensive Plan, the upfront costs are around $400,000 to do all the planning, all the studies, put together a plan, do a TIA, full TIA approval, et cetera, to only come in and figure out if you get the rezoning or not. So you're at risk hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then you carry that cost all the way into the project over five, 10 years, and the interest carry gets, you know, it all gets passed along to the consumer eventually. And there's not a lot of flexibility when something needs to change to be able to come back and redo that plan because you have to come back before commissioners. So we think zoning it residential and keeping with the Comprehensive Plan allows this project to be developed in a thoughtful manner. Under heavy industrial, there's a lot of streams out there, there's a lot of woods out there. Under heavy industrial, it's more conducive to large buildings, those are very intensive uses, you know, landfill, recycling, tow truck yards, I mean, you name it. It's the heaviest industrial zoning we have in the county. And with large industrial development, not only the use is not conducive to environmental stewardship, but just the layout with large plans and large parking fields would be a greater threat to the streams and trees than would otherwise be found with residential, where we can actually, we see those as amenities, and we can actually develop through those and, or around those, excuse me, and create little pockets and use the green space for connectivity. With respect to I-140, obviously with any work we did there, any development we did, we do not want to be looking at I-40, nobody wants to, excuse me, I-140, nobody wants to be looking at I-140, nor do folks going down I-140 want to be looking at us, quite frankly. So we would, our plan would be to leave that nice chunk of trees up against I-140, and there's some lower areas there that we would not want to develop upon. I see the opportunity for those to be kind of a green amenity, walking trail or something like that through there. The cemetery property, I talked to Brian Echol, my partner, I think he was involved. I think that cemetery was part of this parcel originally. Ten, fifteen years ago, Brian remembers meeting one of the family members, and they brought that up, and actually the Trask family who owns it currently subdivided that out and gave them an access easement to it at no charge. So we would obviously be very mindful of the cemetery, want to, you know, highlight its reverence, et cetera, would probably build a buffer around it. And I think a residential use would be nicer neighboring a cemetery than a heavy industrial use, quite frankly. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
So just a clarifone.
Sorry. If you got, you got another minute and thirty-seven seconds, if you got anything else you want to address.
I think, I think that's about it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Ms. Bremmich, you've got five minutes of rebuttal, or Ms. Garber, either one, but it's a total of five minutes between two of you.
This is yet another rezoning request based on the outdated 2016 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. A plan that coupled with the additional dwelling allowance has resulted in overdevelopment of residential complexes. The schools in this area are already over capacity. The heavy industrial zoning also allows light industrial building. The applicant should focus on the current zoning for this lot. They could build a facility that creates jobs for our community. We live in a world of maximums, a quote from staff in planning and zoning, and this is how it will be treated. He states that his goal is to leave the trees, but he doesn't have to because the only thing he's held to is the maximums and the minimums allowed by the Unified Development Ordinance. And as it sits now, the setback with the Special Highway Overlay District is 100 feet. If it were switched to residential, what is it, three feet, 25 feet tops? We're losing a lot so we can build rental high-density apartments. I also wonder, why is staff recommending anything? Shouldn't they be impartial? Please say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bremmich, would you like to say anything? Okay. All right, now, Commissioner.
I can ask this to staff. I just want some clarification for the lady that spoke. There is a law that if there is a burial area or a cemetery, it cannot be, sorry, I just went off, cannot be disturbed. Can you elaborate on that?
I'm not an expert on state law regarding cemeteries.
Okay.
I don't know how to answer that question, to be honest.
Thank you. Or, and I'll go ahead and piggyback on that and add to it, there is a law, I know, that allows, you cannot disturb endangered animals or Venus flytraps or any of those type of things. That would go through some environmental process.
Most likely, yes, ma'am, but I think to the cemetery question, if I could have this presentation back up real quick, just want to highlight, kind of, and level set on where, where we are and what we're looking at with regards to the cemetery.
I believe he said they, they gave them that property so they couldn't disturb it. It's not their property.
I think that he said that they provided an access easement so that they could get to it.
Right, and that was the clarification I was trying to get for this lady who brought that up.
Yes, so you see here, the area highlighted in yellow, that's the parcel we're talking about this evening that's under consideration for rezoning. You see this, this kind of little jut out right here that is not part of this property? That's the cemetery. And so in 2017, they dedicated an access easement that kind of runs almost along this property line out to Blue Clay Road. The easement is on the property in question, but the cemetery itself is not.
Thank you for that clarification.
So in terms of an encroachment, they would need to meet setbacks for that zoning district for any new development. Since there is an existing access easement, they would not be able to.
So it will remain a cemetery with access?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And can you address the concerns about any endangered species or Venus flytraps that might be on that property?
So as part of the TRC review, we do reach out to the Army Corps of Engineers, especially around wetlands with the, so the Pacoson out there and the special, or the advisory flood areas, we're aware that there are likely wetlands, and so their involvement would trigger those kinds of reviews typically.
And they would remain, they would remain undisturbed?
There would most likely, there would be areas that would remain underserved, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Down here.
That's where I stepped in.
Sounds great.
Thank you. I had a question about the zone, the current zoning, it's, what are the conditions for that? So meaning, are there still restrictions on the conservation restrictions? Are there, like, if, because there's a, according to the map, there's a lot of wetlands and potential flood areas?
Yes, ma'am. So those requirements apply regardless of the zoning district. So if it were to be developed as I-2, those conservation set, resources would still have to be surveyed, they would still have to be taken into account. So either whether it's developed residentially or industrially, those requirements still apply.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner's up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, Mike, can you kind of come up? Mike, I see this overall as, you know, just stepping way back, is a difference between residential development versus industrial development in this area. And we know there already are residential development adjacent or in that area as well. I think, and I, it took me a while to warm up to the idea that you were just going for a straight rezoning, but I think I've come around to being very comfortable with it because I, I sense that there's going to be a variety of housing types that are going to be included in that. So it, it almost looks like a series of separate projects that'll be going in there, kind of being flexible to the market is what's going on. So I, I think there's, my first thought was, oh my God, we're going to have a series of, you know, huge apartment buildings there. That's not what I'm hearing. Could you, could you expand upon that, Mike?
Yeah, I think, you know, folks tend to focus just on the maximum density, but obviously the regulatory framework is robust in terms of stream preservation, ecological resources like Venus flytraps, though we have not found any of those out there, wetlands, et cetera. And so just the topography of the site, the way the ditches run would lend itself to several little pods, kind of a meandering development, it'd probably be much lower density than 1,000 units. I know you couldn't fit 1,000 single-family lots on a high and dry field, it's just couldn't get to that density, 10 units per acre. So we, we see as an opportunity for single families, mixture uses, maybe a little bit of multifamily, townhomes, condos, not condos, but duplexes and the like.
Mixed with some, you mentioned mixed use, so some retail and light commercial. in there as well?
No, sir. I don't believe this, like commercials not necessarily allowed within the RMFL.
I see, yeah. Okay. Uh, and, uh, to the stormwater, uh, issue, every portion of the project will have to go through TRC. You'll be responsible for controlling, uh, every bit of water that is in every area that you do develop.
Yes, sir. By law. So, there'll be multiple stormwater ponds out there. And I think with the ditch system that goes through there, uh, it kind of lends itself to, um, more of a, you could, instead of one large regional pond, a bunch of smaller ponds, which would be a little more, um, green and feel a little bit better in terms of not having an unsightly pond. But yes, by law, all stormwater must be treated on-site.
So, for those other, uh, nearby residential areas, you'll actually improve the situation out there in that area or that region, uh, as far as it goes to, um, you know, stormwater runoff, et cetera.
I believe so. I mean, I was thinking in this previous water quality, um, discussion, um, you know, obviously agriculture and its current use, there's a lot of agriculture out there and there, no doubt, a lot of fertilizer being used out there by the tenant that farms it. Um, and so, this would be a great improvement from a nutrient load standpoint. And also, look back on, um, the Bradley Creek, this kind of anecdotal, um, information, but I remember closely studying the Bradley, Bradley Creek water quality numbers below Autumn Hall versus the finger below Clear Run, which is 1970s, 60s development, doesn't have stormwater treatment. Um, and there was a noticeable difference, uh, between the nutrient load and the pollutants in the, in the creek between those two fingers, which I thought was interesting, um, and kind of a stamp of approval for modern stormwater retention and treatment, um, requirements.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, thank you.
Want to go? You go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Manager, we made reference a couple of times to the Blue Clay Business Park that's in proximity to this. Uh, appreciate some of the discussion Ms. Garber brought up about, uh, importance of bringing jobs and such to, uh, our community. But can you give an overview of what it is that we're doing there, what we're trying to accomplish at that site?
Commissioner Scalise, I, I think you defined it specifically. It is all about creating space for the private sector to make investments and create jobs. The county has sold off a couple of parcels there. The water and sewer infrastructure is in, the first road network is in. It was an opportunity to find a way for the county to help the private sector develop land for business and industry that matches with the priorities and the skillsets of the county and what the board and the community wants going forward. It was our first foray, if you will, into the development of a business park that spurred another park now, um, that, that you were working on with the Cameron family on Holly Shelter Road. And so, that will follow behind, but we are very close to activating the Blue Clay Park now for job creation.
Thank you for that overview and, and certainly, it's our intention and hope that it's going to be successful. I think that it's going to be. I'd like to see some more businesses and opportunities and jobs coming to our community. I agree with you ma'am on that point. I will just offer that, um, these issues are always a little complicated, a little contentious. One thing that I will point to though is that this particular applicant has a demonstrated track record in our community and they live here, they're going to have to answer to people if they don't do a good job. Mike, you, you gotta do a good job. People are going to be mad if you don't do a good job. And I'm going to yell at you if you don't do a good job. You gotta save some trees, you gotta keep some green space, you gotta make sure that we protect that cemetery. I mean, and I know that you're going to do that because I know you and I know the people that you work with. And it's important though for us to keep that in mind. It isn't just an opportunity to turn a buck and I know that you don't think about it like that. Make a great product. I'm prepared to move forward with it, but I do think that you need to keep that in mind as you move forward in your planning to do it to the best degree possible because you want to make sure that you're looking at it, you're proud about it, your kids are proud about it whenever they're looking at it and we can provide some opportunity for some people, not just with some housing inventory there, but also as we're working to try to hopefully put some jobs over there as well. So, this can become a, a little note that maybe will work out for the betterment of this community across the board.
Mr. Chair. Uh, before we move forward, uh, I'd like to hear from, I think Pete Avery's here from the Planning Board. Are you representing? It was a, you know, something a little unusual there. I noticed it was a 3-1 vote to proceed. First off, the, I believe we have seven members, right, of the Planning Board?
Yes, yes, we do.
So, the low number and also, what was the discussion like, uh, at the Planning Board level?
The discussion was generally in favor of the rezoning. We had one Planning Board member who did not support it, thought we needed to pursue conditional zoning for the property. Um, but the majority, including myself, felt that the zoning would, would be better managed if it were changed from what it is now. Because industrial zoning, and we do industrial buildings for our work, they take up a lot of space, they take up big footprints, they take out a lot of trees. This particular kind of zoning will give them some flexibility to design around, and we think that's important. Um, I don't need to say the details at this point, but I think at some point, you know, it might be relevant for them to have details, but it's a big piece of property. They gotta go through the TRC process. Um, they gotta meet all the rules and requirements of the county, rule of law has to be observed. And, um, other than the dissenting vote, uh, we were unanimous. There was only four of us there, but we had two that had, uh, conflicts of interest. And we had one member who was o- out of town.
I see. Well, thanks Pete. I just wanted to hear your point of view. You, uh, the Planning Board does tremendous work for us and I'm always interested in what your thought processes are.
And I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you Pete.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I absolutely, first of all, agree with Commissioner Scalise on the work that y'all do. I mean, y'all do very good work and I know you are in the community and, um, I know that you will ultimately do a very good job. I think the concerns I have are one that it is, there are, you cannot have conditions and there is no plan. And I'm, I'm looking at this map here and it, there's 500-year floodplain, 100-year floodplain, I don't know. I get really concerned about that because, you know, up in Ogden where I live, you know, we've had, we have had a lot of issues, especially with storms, um, and flooding with removal of wetlands. And so, for that reason, I, I, I just give pause. I just wish that we would have a plan to look at. And, um, I feel like, I guess ultimately what happens, I, I really do hope that, that it's going to be done well and I think it will. At the same, same time, I just wish that we have plans to look at because I'm very, very nervous about, um, re- rezoning something that's that wet. So, that's how I feel about it. I, I regret, you know, that, um, I can't look at something and be able to say, okay, well, that looks okay. I'm, you know, I'm not concerned about it, but without having any plans and nonconditions, I just, I'm, I don't think I can. And I know we need housing. So, I just want to say that out loud. I know we need housing. But if, if it's going to come at the cost of potential flooding and things like that, that does concern me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I'd just like to respond a little bit to Commissioner Walker's excellent points, uh, that in, through the TRC process and through, when they do come back to decide what will go on that property, uh, consideration of the 100-year floodplain and the 500-year floodplain and the advisory AE floodway will all be a part of their design process and design approval. Uh, so, and I think because of the, the very things you're talking about, uh, the hurricanes and the different, you know, flooding events that we've had, there'll be a, a very strong eye put on that through the development process. I, I'm confident in our staff that they will, will recognize that. Uh, and then again, working with a, you know, an, an excellent company, I, I feel comfortable, you know, in, in supporting this moving forward, that they'll be able to control that.
Well, I agree with you, um, a bit, but it does say in here that I think staff wished there had been a plan. So, I mean, I know they're going to do the best they can as professionals that they are. I just think the concern's there already, so.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
Okay. Well, on that note, I'm going to close the public hearing. And before we proceed with the vote, I'd like to invite the applicant back up to the Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We would like to proceed with the vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the RMFL zoning district would provide uses that are in line with the community mixed use place type that could serve existing and future businesses and residents. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest because the district would act as a new area for a mix of housing types in this area.
Suck it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
It's four to one. I think one thing that's pretty, I, I, that I really like is the, uh, Blue Clay Business Park with running water and sewer and it's allowing other people to enjoy that instead of having sewage tanks and wells. Is there any more business, sir?
Mr. Chair, one brief item that I'd like to address, please sir. As, uh, you know, I am honored to serve on the UNCW Board of Trustees and there is an event this, uh, Friday. Um, I'm trying to find the item that I have here, where, um, thank you sir, uh, All Veteran Group Soaring With Honor. The All Veteran Group lands at UNCW. This is a, uh, a fifth annual Veterans Week Fitness Expo that includes a bunch of folks jumping out of an airplane and landing on a site at UNCW. Uh, it's going to be quite a show. Folks want to see that in person. Uh, you can go to the following address, uh, 4848 Regal, Regal Road, Wilmington, North Carolina, 28403, UNCW's campus at 7:30 in the morning this Friday. Just wanted to make a public announcement about that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. With that said, this meeting is adjourned.